Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Low Court Commissions to order for the date Wednesday, June 3rd. Let's stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the roll call, please.
It's not coming on.
You can hear it.
You can hear?
I can't hear Sheila.
Okay, we're working on it. There's no light on. We're working on it. Now I hear it. Shall we try again?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. We have drawn our meeting to an opening for Wednesday, June 3rd with the call to order and the pledge of allegiance. Next, we'll have roll call. Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Rosinsky?
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you. Next on the agenda, let's consider our agenda for today. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam President, under New Business, I'd like to add one additional item, and the item is a resolution in support of the President's 2015 Task Force on 21st Century Policing.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second to add a resolution on 21st Century Policing to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has carried. Any other additions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none, let's move on to approval of claims for May 20th, 2020. Excuse me, approval of minutes.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the May 20th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of claims.
Payroll ending May 22nd, 2020 in the amount of $1,177,923.78. Miscellaneous claims, $1,031,345.90.
Make a motion to adopt the claims as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second just to assure the public that all commissioners have had an opportunity to review all claims prior to this meeting. All those in favor of the claims as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we have open public comment. Please recall the values that we have about decorum and respectful comment. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Anyone from the public wish to speak at this time? We have some Zoom participants. Is there any member of the public on Zoom that would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to department reports and department head comments. Are there any department reports or comments?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
There's only a few report that we have moved into our new facility since adjacent to the Lepore Hospital. We started that move here.
If you could speak up, Director McGuire.
Yeah. I mean, right now.
Hold on just a moment. We're getting your volume fixed.
Yes.
All right. Andrew McGuire, EMS Director.
Okay. So I just wanted to report that we have moved into our new facility there adjacent to the Lepore Hospital. We started that move last Tuesday. It was about a three-day move. Finally got it completed at the end of the week. We still have part of it of work to do there, odds and ends. I want to thank Darlene and her staff for all the help in the household area. Lugnowski and his group for all the help getting into that facility. Unfortunately, you know, our plan the whole time was to have an open house once we're in there. It's a beautiful facility. We'd like to show it off a little bit, but with the COVID situation, we're just not able to do that. So what we're thinking about doing is maybe a video tour once we get everything 100% done, a little bit of a video tour of the facility, and then we can post that to people to view.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We're really glad that you're in and commend your team for all their hard work in getting us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time or have any reports? Hearing none. Whoops, sorry.
Hi, this is Barb Mossen. Sorry, community resources director. I just wanted to remind everyone that the county is having our annual blood drive on Friday, June 19th. Our blood drive is to honor fallen officers in Indiana. Typically, we have this a little bit in May, but we had to push this back this year. The drive will begin at 9:00 a.m., and it is by appointment only. We will not be taking walk-ins this year. So if anybody would like to donate blood, because the need for blood is constant, they can go to the Red Cross website to schedule that appointment. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good morning, Madam President. This is Director Butcher of Emergency Management.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would just like to say that the PPE distribution format that we have set up has been going quite smoothly. I am still in a position and able to give PPE to departments that have not yet received them. Just forward me an email, and if you could, please, CC, Fran Tivitt as well, and we will do our best to get that PPE distributed. The best way is for you to stop by the office and pick it up. I found that that has worked better. I was able to get the batch from the 911 center to put the PPE, and so it seems like it's going well. I am scheduled today to go to the state and pick up another large batch of PPE so that the batch that the county has purchased, we will be able to continue to sit on in anticipation of a second wave of this disease.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher. You and Fran, in particular, have done a remarkable job on locating PPE at no cost to the taxpayer from the state and from other agencies. So thank you so much for that effort. Any other department heads or department comments? Please. Good morning.
They asked me to come over and inquire on the status of the county's supplies that were ordered or supposedly ordered. We took it upon ourselves to order 5,000 masks so we can prepare for court and beginning jury trials when the Supreme Court allows that. We were told the county would not pay for those, and yet we've had no... Mr. Butcher was kind enough to provide our staff with supplies, but obviously, that's not going to be sufficient enough to operate a court or even plan to operate a court. As far as barriers, anything like that, we're kind of dead in the water until we have some idea of what we're working with to move forward. So...
Thank you. So on the agenda, under New Business, we'll be updating the community and all of our departments on where we are on the opening as far as the Plexiglas infrastructure, as far as supplies. I know, I believe Joey and Kristi are on the line as well. They led the team with counsel President Novak.
I guess that's where the confusion is.
Okay.
We were told to submit supply list to Joey, and then all of a sudden, we're redirected to Larry, which Larry's been fantastic. I'm just trying to...
Make sure you have supplies.
I forgot what's going on, so I can get my staff and everybody, and I'm sure other courts are dealing with it, as well as every other department.
Right.
It got to the point where Friday, we were ready to call a court off because we had nothing except for an email saying, get ahold of Larry to get stuff to keep going, which, like I said, he was great about that.
Okay. So if you can just sit tight, we'll do an update for all departments under New Business. And Kristi, I don't know if Joey is on the line, but we probably need to...
I am.
Okay, thank you. So Joey, if you could stand by to discuss this when we kind of talk about the whole subject, because there are so many moving parts, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
I would be happy to.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Joey and Kristi. All right. Next on the agenda, we have some requests. We have considered road closure for the Tor de la Porte. Anyone here to present on that?
Madam President, we usually do this every year, and absent objection from the Sheriff's Department, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for this road closure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Enterprise regarding potential financial and operational advantages to an auto lease program. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I, oh yeah.
Good morning. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh yeah, Derek Willard with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what I've done here is I've taken your fleet list that you provided me of vehicles, there's about 18 vehicles on it, looked at your trends as far as when you're replacing vehicles, how long you're holding them. On average, in that top box, on average, you're keeping a vehicle about nine years until you're replacing it. All I did was just take the average age of the vehicles and say, okay, it's been roughly on average nine years. Mileage-wise, you're going around 9,500 miles, which is pretty standard for your application. With other municipalities that I work with, it's pretty much the same mileage-wise. And then I took the cost, so maintenance and fuel expense, I used average maintenance for everything of 11 cents per mile, which on a fleet your age is pretty conservative. And then what I'm proposing here is tightening up that replacement cycle to roughly four and a half years, a little over four and a half years, which is going to lower your proposed maintenance to about $41 a vehicle per month. And I assumed on this analysis, gas was $2 per gallon, and roughly, you're getting 10 miles per gallon on your current fleet. So that top yellow line is what you're doing right now. You have 18 vehicles, roughly replacing two a year. You own all 18 of them. If you purchase two a year, it's going to cost you about $52,000. You have no leases right now, so there's zero in that column. And then your maintenance, fuel, and then your overall fleet budget right now with purchases, maintenance, and fuel is roughly $112,000. I don't know if you have those numbers or if that's close. It's usually pretty close. It's just using estimated maintenance and fuel costs is $112,000. And then what I would recommend you do is for your 2021 budget, is you replace 10 vehicles, so you'll have eight vehicles you still own, 10 on lease. You wouldn't have any purchase costs. The lease costs of the vehicles for the year is $52,511, so roughly the same as what you're doing right now. You'd be able to capitalize on $30,000 of equity. So by selling the vehicles, you'd get $30,000 to take off of that expense. Your maintenance cost is going to go down, your fuel cost is going to go down just because you have a newer vehicle. So you're going to have lower maintenance, your fuel economy is going to be higher because you're replacing older vehicles. And your overall fleet budget, when you take out $30,000 of equity, is $68,000. So roughly a savings of $43,000. And then what we do is we look at it ongoing, what that looks like for you guys. So over a 10-year period, you'd save $300,000 average per year. You'd save $15,000 just by getting onto a tighter replacement plan. Essentially, you're just lowering your maintenance and fuel cost, potential downtime as well. So I don't know, that's a lot of information. I don't know if there's any questions on the analysis of the whole. Fine.
Well, I guess I would have a few questions. So most of the vehicles, we keep them a long time, and they have high mileage, so they have higher maintenance costs, and they are, many of them are heavy gas users, gasoline users.
Yeah.
So the current maintenance cost for those vehicles is $118.75. Is that monthly?
Yeah.
You amortized it over the 12 months, and that's...
Yeah, so on that yellow line, the maintenance spend of $25,650 is saying across these 18 vehicles, that's roughly what you're spending in a year. That may be a little low, because, and same thing with fuel, $34,200. We try to be as conservative as we can, just for the sake of being fair for what you're paying right now and what you're budgeting right now. But yeah, those numbers are probably pretty conservative across the 18 vehicles that you provided me.
Okay, so you're saying our savings would be in maintenance because they're newer vehicles as opposed to the old vehicles?
Partially, yeah. Partially, you're going to save money in maintenance just because you're not, essentially, you're going to go from doing repairs that you're not expecting to oil changes and tire rotations because it's a newer vehicle, especially with your mileage pattern. If you're going 9,000 to 10,000 miles on average, there's probably some that are higher, some that are lower. You're going to be doing oil changes for the first, really, year to two years, then you may get into tires depending on the wear of the vehicle, but your maintenance is going to go significantly down. Your fuel's going to drop some just because you're getting out of a 2008, 2009, 2010 vehicle into a 2021 vehicle, and the fuel economy is just much higher now than it was five, 10 years ago on the same vehicle. And then some of it's just capitalizing on the equity. So by selling those vehicles, there's $30,000. In the first year for 10 vehicles, it's roughly worth $30,000. So we just take the mileage and the age of the vehicle. Obviously, we haven't seen the vehicles, and we say, here's what we think we would be able to sell them for. And that's your money basically back to you. What we usually do is roll it into the lease, so it lowers your overall payment. But to make it easy to look at on this, we just take it out of what your overall cost would be, because we're either going to cut you a check back for that amount of $30,000, or we can roll it into the lease and lower the payment, lower the amount of vehicle costs that you have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we're always looking for cost savings, and I have to say, some of the older vehicles aren't very efficient in any way, shape, or form. So I'm interested in that. Commissioner?
Yes, it's something we've been talking about for a few years now. I think this is the third presentation effort from Derek. I've talked with other commissioners in other counties, other business owners, car dealers. Everybody I've talked to said, it absolutely makes sense to start doing business different than what we've been doing. We buy cars for $25,000, $30,000, drive them into the ground until they're worth nothing. And in the meantime, you've got a whole lot of repairs. We've actually had to tow a car back from Lafayette. Okay, how is that doing business good?
Yeah.
You know, this absolutely make business, to start thinking outside the box and doing things a little different. I did propose perhaps a pilot program, which is kind of what we put together here, to see how it works. But I mean, I could read, I could understand that the county is going to save money doing things different. And for people, like I said, I could be in lacrosse today and Hudson Lake tomorrow, looking at different issues. I don't want to have to get stuck alongside the road someplace, especially in Lafayette.
I get concerned about sending some of our employees to training in Indianapolis and/or even further south, and them being in cars that are unsafe, to be quite...
For county business, I'm driving a car that's got 158,000 miles on it. The reason is because they put a lot of money in it to keep it on the road.
Yep.
Which I wouldn't do that at home in my own vehicle. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we've seen the same thing. So I personally work with St. Joe County, Hancock County, Elkhart County, and roughly the same, the same thing. You have vehicles that get older, you've already paid for them, so you don't have a payment, but you're just making that amount of payment in maintenance and fuel. And then if you have the instances where you're stranded somewhere and needs to get towed, that's, one, it's a headache for that person that's stranded, and the cost of that is definitely, one, probably not in your budget, and, two, not very cost-effective from an efficiency standpoint.
I can't tell you how many times I've heard from the sheriff's garage, says, we've got a vehicle here. In fact, they had me come out and look at it. Holy moly, it's very scary. They said, we cannot keep putting money into this thing, this junk.
Yeah.
Madam President, I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned that other counties have been using this?
Yes.
How long have they been using this?
I would say the Elkhart County, we've been working with for three, four years. Hancock County, they did similar to what you were mentioning of a pilot. They've been with us for two years now, or roughly a year and a half. They did a year pilot with their Community Corrections and Sheriff Department, and then now we're looking at the sheriff as a whole with patrol vehicles and everything to help with that as well. And then a lot of counties in Indianapolis have been doing it for four or five years. We're headquartered out of Indianapolis, so naturally, they're closer to us, so that's kind of where we start and then work our way out. St. Joe County has been on board for five years, and all of their highway vehicles are through us and Health Department vehicles, and they just, they're to the point with the highway, they do three-quarter ton trucks, so it's a little different probably than a lot of, similar to probably what your highway is doing now. And they have it on a five-year cycle, basically, where we keep a lot of the aftermarket equipment and move it to the next truck, so you're not costing a lot of money on that. And then we're just replacing the vehicles every five years. So they just came up on where they replaced all of their vehicles this last year in the 2020 model year.
The next question was, did they realize all the savings that you originally projected for them?
Yeah, so with Hancock County specifically, they, we did a 12-month pilot, and there's a, your sector has a unique opportunity because you get a really good rebate from the manufacturers, and resale values were really, really good on pickup trucks last year. So we did a 12-month cycle of pickup trucks, so they had them for 12 months. And upfront, we said, hey, here's what it's going to cost you. You're going to save money, and your payment's going to be the same if you replace it in 12 months. So that's what we showed them roughly three months ago, and that's why we started going to the other departments, just because we're able to actually recognize the savings. St. Joe County specifically, on the highway side, they, their budget actually went down when they replaced them this round. So we had their budget set, and then by replacing the vehicles, we lowered their budget. Ultimately, the goal is to get to a point where it's a flat-line expense, so it's easy to budget it. You know what your maintenance is going to cost, your fuel is going to cost, and what your acquisition's going to be, and you have more efficient vehicles. So that's the main goal. But yeah, both of those specifically have recognized...
And the last question I have is, in the counties you have worked with, like, did you take care of all the vehicles, including the Sheriff's Department, or was the Sheriff's Department not included in your proposal?
All the vehicles. We can take care of pretty much anything from a small sedan up to a Class 7 dump truck.
Okay.
So we have that opportunity. We can also do patrol vehicles as well. So yeah, we can, honestly, the goal is to give you a whole fleet to be a consultant for you for your entire fleet of vehicles and say, here's the right thing. Obviously, the sheriff vehicles operate completely different. They're higher miles, probably a little more wear and tear just because they drive more miles than your normal 10,000-mile county vehicle. But that's the goal, is to plan with, and I do that essentially, meet with everybody quarterly, meet with you guys and say, hey, here's what happened the first year, here's what we did, here's the opportunities you have, and kind of show you what the numbers actually ended up being. So that's the biggest thing, is it's not like, hey, you're going to get 10 vehicles, and then I'm gone, and I still continue to consult with you guys and plan and make it work the best for you. So that's the biggest benefit, I think, is just you guys are managing the county right, and what I do every day is manage fleets of vehicles. So that's what I'm doing every single day with commercial clients and municipalities, nonprofits, pretty much anybody that has vehicles, we can help out, so.
Madam President, we have a couple of options. One is to take this and your advisement and forward it to the council for their consideration, or maybe have a joint commission council. I don't know, what's the best?
So I really liked Commissioner Rosinsky's idea about doing a pilot, and I guess I would, you know, you mentioned that it's been presented numerous times, and we just kind of let it sit, and then it goes away. Perhaps we can endorse the idea of a pilot and then send it to the county council for their analysis and review? Would you be willing to meet with the county council and do a similar presentation and answer their questions?
Yeah.
Because they're the financial arm?
For sure. Definitely. We also, currently, you have two vehicles through us with Adult Protective Services.
Right.
There's two vehicles there, and Christine is who I talked to over there, but, and I know I've talked to her already, and she is, would be an advocate for us too. So if that, yeah, I'm perfectly happy to...
Well, I'm interested in the idea for the safety for our employees. It really concerns me because we've had women employees who are going to training and are unwilling to drive a rickety.
Unreliable vehicle.
Unreliable vehicle is a more diplomatic word than rickety, I guess.
Yeah.
And then the efficiency and cost savings are certainly high on our list, so...
Since the council cut our budget for fuel, we've got to do something.
Yeah.
Still got to get the job done. A big argument that the council has had in the past is, well, if we start leasing vehicles, why do we need a sheriff's garage? I would invite them to go there once in a while, see what goes on.
Yeah.
Always, always an ambulance in there.
Yeah.
We just got a bunch of new police cars. They got to get them all fitted and take out to... There's so much work, they're under manned as it is. They could probably use a little... But besides that, can't our people do the regular maintenance, all the changes and stuff?
Yeah, we have...
That saves us money.
I actually have a couple also, just like HVAC companies and construction companies that have their own garages, they do their own maintenance, and the only time I say, hey, try to take it to a dealer if it's a warranty, because obviously, you don't have to pay for it then, it's just, it's free fix. But yeah, you can do your own maintenance. That's not a concern at all.
I'd entertain a motion to support the pilot concept?
I would make that motion.
I'd second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second to support the concept of a pilot for leasing of fleet vehicles. Our goal is to send it to the county council and to our auditor for review. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has carried. Thank you so much for spending time with us today.
Thank you.
And thanks for doing the crunch of the numbers.
Yeah.
That's really quite persuasive.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a request permission to approach the county council to fund the Intercept Tech 84 Body Scanner, Director Brown from Community Corrections.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good morning, Madam President.
Director Brown, if you, since this is the first time you're coming in front of the commission, can you take a couple of minutes and just introduce yourself and just tell everybody who's watching a little bit about your background, and that way everybody knows your background?
Welcome. We're glad that you're here.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. My name is Rochelle Brown. I am the new executive director at Lepore County Community Corrections. It's kind of an honor and a privilege to be serving with you all. You all approve me because I have 14 years of experience in the criminal justice field. I have worked six years in the DOC, eight years in probation. I also carry a master's in criminal justice as well. My heart and my passion is criminal justice. So I've been in it 14 years, I think I'm repeating that. So it's been a journey. I've learned a lot along the way. I come with a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, a wealth of education, as mentioned, and I'm just looking forward to embarking on some new territories here at the Community Corrections. So that's a little bit about my background.
Thank you.
Anything else I can say?
That's fine.
All right. So I'm here today to talk about the Intercept Whole Body Detection Scanner as a product of Tech 84. I'm here today because I just started here a couple of months ago, and we've already had two ODs, overdoses, at our facility. And I'm so thankful to my staff, they responded appropriately and timely, that we saved lives in that situation. So I... I come with a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, a wealth of education, as mentioned. And I'm just looking forward to embarking on some new territories here at the Community Corrections. So that's a little bit about my background.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm here today to talk about the Intercept Whole Body Detection Scanner as a product of Tech 84. I'm here today because I just started here a couple of months ago, and we've already had two ODs, overdoses, at our facility. And I'm so thankful to my staff, they responded appropriately and timely, that we saved lives in that situation. So I want to do, do, give them that prop and give them that hurrah and applaud here today because they did very well. And everyone was taken to hospital and they were brought back to the facility. No harm done, just irresponsible in regards on to the participant. So I'm thankful to say that they are still alive. But in those instances, in my midst of researching and looking over, you know, how did this happen? When did this occur? Why did this happen? What can we do to help this situation moving forward? So what they're doing is they're bringing these drugs into our facility in their bodies, mainly in the anal cavity is what it is. So we want to get this scanner so that we can scan these individuals as they come in and say they're in those particular parts. So then we can do whatever we need to do moving forward, report it to the courts and so forth. Because it is a penal institution, we can't have these into, in our facilities. So that's why it's important that we have it. We're currently using the jail. We'll load them up in the car and bring them over. But that's not efficient either because that takes typically two officers off the unit. And we need as many officers as possible to be on the unit. So to tell you a little bit about the scanner, the Intercept scanner is uniquely designed so that the subject being scanned does not move. It has an ultimate compact of 34x72 footprint and is transportable. Has a four-second scanning time, and because it is unique in patent design, there is no, it's not distorted at all on that final image. So you can actually see what's in a particular person's body, kind of like the airport is where we're going. All of these features are unique to the Intercept and qualify for the sole source status. The Intercept scanner is the only whole-body contraband detection system that is specifically designed so that the subject being scanned is not facing the X-ray beam. So that helps in regards to your radiology type situation there, okay? So if you will look at me on the sheet I gave you, the first one that says Intercept Tech 84, you'll see a picture of it in your left-hand corner. That would be our scanner. And it is used in our prisons and our jails already currently. And that's the point that why we would need it here, I feel. Also, we'd like to add the cost, which is the reason why I'm here today too, is a total of $149,000. Now, we have spoke with Sheriff Boyd. Sheriff Boyd have agreed to allow us to have the $75,000 out of the misdemeanor funds. So that's in place. So I'm here standing before you today requesting the $74,000 from this, from you all. This will include, of course, our installation calibration, also three days of full training for my all staff. There are different degrees of training, but we'll fit them where they need to go. Also include two years of warranty of parts, labor, and the entire system and its installation. And we can also purchase additional warranty if we need to do that also. So that is the final cost at the $149. We also were in talk with Sheriff Boyd. Sheriff Boyd does have the Secure Plus system here at the jail. That is a less cost. However, if you look on the page number two of the copies that I gave you, the back page, we have a very small area where this device can fit, okay? So if you look on that picture right there on the wall, will be on your left-hand side, is the only place where we can sit that device. Device that the jail has is just too big for that area. So their cost is much lower. I recognize that. But our space findings is only space that we can have the Tech 84 device. Okay? Do you have any questions for me?
Director Brown, I remember at some of our Community Corrections Board meetings, we did discuss about maybe trying for some grant money. I don't remember what transpired after that.
Okay. Before me, the director prior to me, he did apply. And for what he shared with Ms. Atwater Ashle, and she shared with me that we were not approved for the grant.
We're not approved. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam President, I have been on the Community Corrections Board, and this issue has come up periodically from time to time. It's an important issue of safety. I know it's, the cost is high, but at the same time, I think this is a necessity. So I make a motion that we, we support this and give permission to Director Brown to approach the county council for funding.
Second motion.
Director, President Kloskowski is here. Do you want, do you want to speak to this at all? Or and I see Sheriff Boyd in the back, perhaps if anyone has any questions for Sheriff before we take a vote?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that, one of the things that Ms. Brown didn't mention is that the staff members will also be subject to this body scanner as they enter the facility. I hate to say it, but we know that sometimes staff bring things in. And if we can stop that aspect of this problem too, it's just a double thing, a double advantage to having this item in place. I think that the potential of continuing to bring drugs in that facility, obviously, is we want to stop that as soon as possible. Been working with Director Brown and the board. As Dr. Corris said, we have been discussing this. We have looked at other avenues possibly get. I wish that we could use the less expensive item in our facility, but it's a station. So I fully support the idea of getting this body scanner and sooner rather than later.
One other comment I want to make, Madam President, is during the discussions at the Community Corrections Advisory Board meetings, most of the members on that committee also have been very supportive of this.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate it. Next on the agenda, under Old Business, it is, we have opening bids for the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project?
Yes, Madam President, members of the commission. Attorney P.G. has been involved, of course, with the working group involved in the construction. He is here along with our facilities director, Larry Levandowski, and they will perform the opening and receipt of the bids on the record if we could.
We're going to open the bids by category, and we'll announce the bidder, the category, and the amount. After we open the bids, they'll be available for review downstairs. And we set tables up and we're going to transport them all down. So it's a big project, so this is going to take a little while.
Thank you.
All right. Green demolition contractors. This is category one, building demolition. It's timely. All these bids are timely received. $178,800. That's green demolition contractors. I'm going to open this one first because we're not sure which category, whether it's one or two. It's not on the outside. This is Alpine Demolition Services. This is category one, $130,000. This is category two, existing interior demolition, Gibson Lewis LLC. $1,174,000. This is categories two, four, and six. It'll be existing interior demolition, concrete, masonry, restoration. Category 9B, finished carpentry label, labor, Larson Danielson. Trying to figure it out. Not labeled. Let me check the other envelope. There's no bid form on that one. Oops. No, this is not.
Randy, did you say you can't hear?
This is number two. $1,888. Okay, all right.
Okay, maybe the microphone could be.
Close enough?
Yeah, they're having trouble hearing it.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Okay. This is number two. The same thing. All right. Again, Larson Danielson, category two. Can you hear me better?
Yes, Randy?
Yeah. Okay. Category two, Larson Danielson, $1,188,392. That's that one. Okay, category two, $1,188,392. Category four, $1,67,200. Category six? Yeah, category four, $1,67,000. I can't make that one out. And category six? $297,505. That should take care of Larson Danielson. All right, then. Category 9B, finished carpentry, $449,153. I think this is just support material. Next is green demolition contractors, category two, existing interior demolition. $856,800. Next is Gibson Lewis LLC. Category two, existing interior demolition, category 9B, finished carpentry. Category 22, painting wall finishes, category 9A, carpentry materials and labor. I think they lumped it together. So for categories two, existing interior demolition, 9A, carpentry materials and labor, 9B, finished carpentry labor, and number 22 walls finishes, $3,871,000. Yeah, they just put it all together. Okay. I guess we won't see that until we get to that category. Tonne blank. Then category four, concrete. Next is category five, precast, Duken Precast Inc. $1,268,000. Next is category five, precast, Lombard Architectural Precast Products Company. $1,499,000. This is from Kirkstra. Category five, precast, from Kirkstra Precast, $1,448,200. Again, number five, precast, High Concrete Group LLC. Category six, masonry. Go Inc., G-O-U-G-H. Go is go. $455,500. This is from Kwiatkowski Masonry. What is it? Kwiatkowski, thank you. Betchered that up, didn't it? This is category six, masonry and masonry restoration, $471,500. Category eight steel, this is Indiana Steel Fabricating Inc. Category eight, steel bed package, affordable welding. Category eight, steel bed package, affordable welding. One million three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Category eight steel, Wilson Iron Works. One million four hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. Category nine B, finished carpentry, tonne of blank. Four hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars. Big category nine B, finished carpentry and twenty-one ceramic and tile, Zolkowski Construction. This is for nine B, finished carpentry, five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Category twenty-one ceramic tile. Uh, and carpet, uh, eight hundred sixty thousand eight hundred dollars. This is category twenty-one. Make sure this is the same thing. Yeah. Yeah. Check this one. I think these are just duplicates. Yeah. Category nine A, carpentry, go off ink. One million seven hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. Okay, that's category nine A. Nine A, this is, uh, Kleckner Interior Systems Inc. One million six hundred forty-three thousand three hundred seventy dollars. Category nine A, carpentry, uh, Gibson-Louis LLC. One million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Nine B, finished carpentry labor, Gibson-Louis LLC. Five hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Category ten A, fishing, finished carpentry materials, tonne of blank. Two hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars. This is from E. Hail. Ten B, finished carpentry, one hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred four dollars and ninety-four cents. Oh wait, uh, ten B, ten B.
Benches, furniture walls.
Okay, they both, alright, they broke it down. So ten B, we got finished pre-carpet material benches, ninety-seven thousand six hundred six dollars and seventy cents. Then we have fishing, finished carpentry materials furniture, one hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred four dollars and ninety-four cents. And we have finished carpentry walls, one hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. From Office Interiors. This is Division twelve furnishings and then BC, ten B, finished carpentry. Is twelve furnishings, is that a different category? Is twelve, yeah? So this is both Divi- number twelve furnishings and ten B, finished carpentry courtroom furniture, one hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. So one sixty-six, seven thirteen, and forty-two cents. Next is, uh, number twelve, plastic cabinets, uh, tonne of blank.
I think they combined them.
They combined them.
It looks like they combined them.
Yeah.
The Division twelve furnishings and, um, ten B, finished carpentry materials for the courtroom furniture, one price. Once again, this is, uh, number twelve, plastic cabinets, tonne of blank. One hundred eighteen thousand fifty-two dollars. This is Division fifteen, roofing metal panels. Babilla, Babia?
Babilla.
Babilla, roofing and sheet metal. Three hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred thirty dollars. Yep. It's, uh...
Did you get it?
Three fifty-nine, three thirty.
One box more. One down.
Another tiny box. Oh, okay, so we have a, a package submitted by, uh, Gene Vincent. This is what rejected, is not qualified. The contractors had to be pre-qualified to bid. From Allied Door and Hardware. Division sixteen. Two hundred five thousand dollars. There's no tonne of blank sheet on here. Yep. This is from Lozaro.
Two hundred, two hundred five thousand.
Right.
Yep.
There we are. Division nineteen, glass glazing entrances. Three hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. It's from House of Doors Inc. Division eighteen, overhead doors. You got category eighteen, fifty-five thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars.
We got number nineteen. Clay's Entrance, Clay's Entrance.
It's nineteen. They're both nineteen.
Nineteen? Nope. Nope. Category nineteen, that's all they've bid on.
Uh, next is nineteen, also Myer Glass and Mirror. Three hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. Next is category twenty-one, ceramic, Brazilian carpet, uh, Midwest tile and interiors. Category twenty-one, Midwest tile and materials, seven hundred forty thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Category twenty-one, tile carpet. Master Tile Inc. Seven hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. Say that again?
Repeat the number, repeat the number.
Seven hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. This is Stans Painting and Decorating. Category twenty-two, two hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred twenty dollars. Again, category twenty-two, Gibson-Louis LLC. Again, category twenty-two, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Category twenty-two, painting wall finishes, uh, Osterbahn and Sons. Did I get that right? Three hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars. Lead Company Inc. Feet, category twelve, plastic laminate cabinets. Ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. Category twenty-three, Allied Door and Hardware LLC.
Which one are you talking about? That was the claims.
Twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Section fourteen, elevators. Section, machine? Well, it was section fourteen, machine room, less traction elevator?
It's section.
Okay. Yeah, they got fourteen here. This is, uh... Hold on. Schindler Elevator Corp. Two hundred forty thousand. Sorry, Larry. We'll break something before this is done, right? Over to Sel- over to Selator. Big category twenty-six, Otis Elevator. Three hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred twenty dollars. Yeah, Valley Fire Protection. Uh, Division twenty-one. What's that?
Big category.
Oh, well, I got twenty-one on here. Okay, so three hundred, so this is category twenty-seven, not twenty-one? Okay. Three hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars. Got another one from Valley Protection Fire Protection Systems. Again, this, oh, that must be the same thing. Oh, okay. So that's a duplicate. So that's a duplicate. Make sure this is a duplicate. That's the third copy of the same bid. Uh, this is from Shaw, Shambon and Son. Big Category 27 Fire Suppression. Oh, here. Thank you. $580,625. This is from Ryan Fire Protection, Big Category 27 Fire Suppression. $429,981, no, $981, excuse me. It's $429,981. State Line Fire Systems, Category 27. Category 28 Plumbing. This is Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, $661,780. Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, Category 28, $661,780. This is LGS Plumbing Inc. Category 28. Circle R Mechanical, Category 28 Plumbing. $710,000. Arctic Engineer, Arctic Engineering Company, Big Category 28 Plumbing. $766,000. Circle R Mechanical, Category 29 HVAC. Arctic Engineering Company, Big Category 29 HVAC. $2977,000. DA Dodd LLC. Category 29 HVAC. Say that again, $3580,875. Midwestern Electric Inc. Big Category 30 Electrical. Circle R Electric, Big Category 30 Electrical. Again, this is Category 30 Circle R Electric, $1592,115. Amcor Higher Electric. Big Category 30 Electric. Sweeney Electric. Category 30 Electrical. $1842,000, excuse me. This is Continental Electric Company, Category 30 Electrical. $1740,000. Martella Electric, Number 30 Electrical. $1950,000. India Earth Inc. Category 31 Earthwork. $98,700 for Catag, well, Category 1 is Building Demolition, and that's $98,700. Okay? Yeah. Yes. And they also, Big Category 31 Earthwork Utilities. $648,700. Yes. Delta 3 Inc. Category 31.
They're probably copies.
All right, I'll double check. That's our seal. That's a duplicate. Yeah, that's a duplicate. Next is Site Services Inc. Key Category Number 33 Asphalt, Concrete. $218,029. Lawson Kelly. Category 33. $280,000. Reese Riley. This is a secure bid.
Mr. DJ, this evening take an ag bill or a leave to help your pain.
Apparently Reese Riley had the hell of a cake button. Do you have scissors? You good?
Next time we need to serve coffee before we open bids. Yeah, right.
All right, uh, Category 33 Asphalt Concrete, $224,140. Same thing?
33.
Yep.
Did you get that one?
Yeah, just double check. These are, the other two are duplicates, or duplicates. And lastly, we have, uh, Lakeshore Landscaping Inc., Number 35 Landscaping. No bids in 34? You won. Okay, so we had no bids, no bids in Category 34. And we have Category 35, uh, Lakeshore Landscaping Inc., $84,086. And 83 cents.
Yeah.
And I believe that concludes the bids, Commissioners?
Excellent. Thank you.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept these bids and, uh, forward it to, um, a construction manager, uh, for review and recommendations.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second to approve, uh, the receipt of bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Moving on, uh, under New Business, we have a resolution to consider on the, um, support for 21st Century, uh, Policing. Dr. Cora?
Madam President, uh, the death of Mr. George Floyd, uh, due to the brutal action by some police officers in Minneapolis has caused an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of pain and outrage, uh, which is shared by all of us. Uh, there have been a series of events that preceded this in Georgia and Kentucky, and there have been a series of events even prior to that. Madam President, our nation is in a crisis in the aftermath of the murder of Mr. Floyd and in the aftermath of the COVID-19 crisis and in the aftermath of the economic crisis, uh, that followed the COVID-19 crisis. I believe we should follow the footsteps of leaders like Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., Mahatma Gandhi, Nelson Mandela, and others who have dealt with such struggles in their own lifetimes by taking positive action and have inspired all of us. Madam President, in 2014, President Obama appointed a task force to address the problems in policing. It came up with a report called the 21st Century Policing. I believe we need to do two things, uh, moving forward. Uh, we should ask that the people who are responsible for, uh, Mr. Floyd's murder are held accountable, and we should change the system moving forward by adopting the recommendations of the task force. Uh, Madam President, there are six pillars, uh, in, uh, in the, in those recommendations. One is building trust and legitimacy. Second one is policy and oversight. Third one is technology and social media. Fourth one is community policing and crime reduction. Uh, fifth one is training and education, and sixth one is Office of Wellness and Safety. Madam President, with your permission, if it's, um, I'd like to read this resolution.
Please.
Whereas in light of the recent events, calls have understandably increased for creation of task forces, study committees, and evaluation of police procedures and adherence to best practices throughout the country. And whereas this body has conducted extensive review and determined that a bipartisan national task force was charged in December of 2014 with identifying best practices and offering recommendations on how policing practices can promote effective crime reduction while building public trust. And whereas 11 members of this task force came under, came together with more than 100 individuals from diverse stakeholder groups, including law enforcement officers and executives, community members, civic leaders, advocates, researchers, academics, and others, and submitted testimony and heard from individuals from around the nation in seven different listening sessions. And whereas the final report released in 2015 makes recommendations to police departments to ensure fair, safe, and effective community policing, and provides an exceptional working document to assist law enforcement with how suggested policies and procedures to increase trust, fairness, justice, and mutual respect. And whereas we know that most police officers report for duty every day with a mission to keep us safe and protect us from harm, and we are grateful to the majority of these officers who carry out their mission with dignity and honor, and especially to those who give their lives to the cause and who respond unflinchingly to violent crime, mental health crisis, people with substance abuse disorders, interpersonal conflicts, and intimate partner violence, mass shootings, and other tragedies that afflict our nation. And whereas there is no panacea to problematic police practices, and that such department faces its own challenges and must create its own solutions to meet individual community needs and interests. And whereas even as there are exceptional leaders in community policing techniques such as demonstrated by our own sheriff and his leadership team, uh, it is helpful to share these best practices with others around the state so that all law enforcement leaders and rank and file can develop and enforce practices, uh, that restore confidence in police and ultimately heal wounds and build community trust. And whereas we believe the most constructive role we can play in helping disseminate this final report to elected officials and law enforcement throughout Indiana who can use the tools and best practices referenced in every department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Leport County Board of Commissioners that we strongly support the initiatives laid out in the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing and pledge along with our sheriff to communicate this report to our fellow elected officials and law enforcement leadership throughout Indiana in the hope that best practices laid out in the report can be adapted, um, in every department, in every community across Indiana. The ultimate goal is fair, safe, and effective. The ultimate goal is fair, safe, and effective community policing that respects and protects human life and dignity and ensures safety for all. We will provide this report to the Association of Indiana County Commissioners, and we thank the Sheriff for agreeing to supply this to his colleagues at a law enforcement summit to be held Thursday and Friday of this week in Bloomington, Indiana, all of which is resolved this third day of June 2020. Madam President, I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. We have a motion and a second. I know Sheriff, you're in the room and perhaps you, and I know Chief Campbell, I believe, is on the line, the Zoom line. So I think this is a perfect opportunity to hear from our law enforcement leaders. Certainly, this is a very trying time, and our communities are roiling with tension and with challenges. I did observe Chief Campbell's actions in Michigan City to calm the masses, and I know that Lepore County Sheriff's Department was on site and there as support. So Chief Campbell, first of all, I want to commend you for your, for being the ultimate professional and really showing what empathetic police work is to people who were highly suspect. I think your actions as a leader, as a law enforcement professional, and also a man of God really calmed the waters, showed that we, that listening and learning is a part of police work. Law enforcement isn't just about putting people in jail, it's about understanding the community's issues and really stressing empathy and listening. You really impressed a lot of people, so thank you so much for that. Sheriff Boyd is here as your colleague, and perhaps the two of you could just address this. Community policing has been around for a long time. It's not anything, it's not a new concept, but it certainly is a concept that has been vetted by research, vetted by best practices, and I know you're both big believers in community-oriented policing.
Absolutely, I'll defer to Chief Campbell first if he'd like to speak.
Sure. Thank you, Sheriff Boyd. And thank you for those kind words that you bestowed upon me, but I just wanted to make it very clear that it was an entire team effort. Our senior law enforcement leader in the county, Sheriff Boyd, was very critical to all that we did. He offered full support along with Long Beach Trail Creek and the Indiana State Police, and it was very critical, so thank you for that. The Michigan City Police Department is in full agreement with implementing the best practices and the mandates of the Twenty-First Century Policing. We are ready to adopt those six pillars, and I think it's necessary in the times which we live that, you know, police officers are often looked to, looked at to be warriors, but this is the time where we have to shift and change and recognize that we are leaders in the community and we must not only be warriors, but must also be guardians of the community and come to greater levels of partnership. And I think that this is a great step towards bringing community trust in what we're doing. So we highly recommend the resolution and are ready to partner with it, and we will have our full support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We embrace it as well at the Sheriff's Office. I'm really proud of the fact that the ideals that came as a result of the Twenty-First Policing are already being implemented at the Lepore County Sheriff's Office. With that said, we do have a ways to go, but you know, one of our pillars is transparency, as you know, and we tell our staff all the time that one of the most empathetic things that we can do is to listen, and therefore it's very important for us to get into our individual communities and provide services that are catered specifically to those communities because our communities are so very diverse and have long said that the needs of the people of La Crosse are much different than the needs of the people, say, in Michigan City. And so we can't, we can't paint our services with a broad brush, and we need to listen to what each individual community needs. So we're really in tune with that. We can't help but look at what's happened in Minnesota and Minneapolis and be sickened by that. We want to rid our profession of those bad apples as well, and we want to make sure that we're transparent and we want to make sure that we set a very high standard and we hold our employees and those in our profession to a higher standard than we expect from the citizens that we police. And policing truly is a partnership. We recognize it's a partnership here in Lepore County, and we are only as successful as the partnership that we have with the public that we serve. We can't lose sight of the fact that's exactly what we do and that is to serve. We continue to build on our relationship. We hope for the best, we pray for the best, we talk with those in our community, and we just pray for peace. We pray that we provide a solution to the problems, and we pledge that we're going to listen more empathetically than we ever have before. We're lucky here in Lepore County because we don't have the problems, many of the problems that the larger communities have, and that's because we do have a very close-knit relationship with the public that we serve. And I told you before that as I travel throughout the state of Indiana and talk to sheriffs, they can't help but notice what's going on here in Lepore County well before this recent crisis and the relationship that we have with the public. And we feel very strongly that we want to maintain that very strong relationship, and we've been doing that well before this crisis. We want to do an even better job, and we've had our community meetings, we've had our coffees with the cop, and we'll continue to do that. We'll continue to publish our annual jail report and our annual department report to social media and to our website so people can see exactly what their sheriff's office is doing and how we are spending their taxpayers' money because there are stockholders in what we do. So I want to thank you. We embrace this. We pledge that we're going to provide a better service and we're going to be as professional as we can be, and we are here for the public, and we hope to continue to walk shoulder to shoulder with them, and we will get through this crisis.
Madam President, I had one other comment. You know, I communicate with a lot of my physician colleagues across the state and across the country through the state medical and the AMA, and I've been communicating to them that how blessed we are in our county to have leaders like Sheriff Boyd and Chief Campbell. And I think all of us need to just work in our local communities to make sure that we bring about these changes. And so I want to thank both of you for your leadership, and I'll make sure that what we do here is transmitted across the country. That way, every individual can take reports like this and take action in their own community to make the communities better. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So both Chief Campbell and Sheriff Boyd brought up the idea that a shoulder to shoulder with the community, and I think that's what makes Lepore County in a particularly unique position. This problem is not a new problem, but in our county, we have worked at it over and over and over. I think, you know, when I watched Chief Campbell, I remember him as a basketball, high school basketball player, and so do a lot of other people. So, you know, we have the, you know, the relationships. When your officers are at the county fair, for example, they're building relationships with young people, they're going to the basketball games, they're going to the, you know, the baseball games, and those are options that we as a local community can, you know, do. One of the things I think is so, I'm hearing it a lot from people, they're saying, what can I do? What can we do better? And I found the quote that most of us already know, the only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. And I think that's, you know, the purpose of this resolution today is not that community policing is a new thing, but it's a thing that really needs to be focused upon, and if those communities around the country that are in dire straits at the moment can listen and can learn from us, then we have done a good job as good citizens of the United States of America. So I wanted to talk about again the integrity, trust, transparency, listening, and authenticity that are those pillars that are so important. So thank you so much for your support, and thank you, Chief Campbell, for building the network of law enforcement across the county with all the agencies that really work hand in hand with our communities. So thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, yes? Okay. We have a motion and a second to support the resolution to advance the Twenty-First Century Community Oriented Policing and share this final report from the President's 2015 Task Force to law enforcement and to all of the county commissioners and other community leaders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam President, one quick comment. The report itself is quite thick, but the executive summary is only three, four pages. So if you're intimidated by reading this whole report, just read the summary. I think it's very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, consider resolution signifying commission approval regarding applying for COVID-19 immediate relief grant for Lifeline program and authorize the signature on any related OKRA documents, including certification of environmental exemption and compliance with federally required four-factor analysis as part of the applicant review and approval. This is being presented by Mitch Bishop, our planner, and Tony Rodriguez from the Office of Community and Economic Development. And this is a follow-up to the grant, the Lifeline grant that we approved at our last meeting and passed on to the county council. And George is making sure that we have the correct authorizations in place. Tony and Mitch, I know you're on, or I think you're on, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, in order to meet the OKRA readiness requirements, ultimately, all three of those documents have to be signed and uploaded into Grant and Miss System website of OKRA. There are three there, one simply a resolution stating that Commission gave us approval to apply for the funds. That requires all three signatures. The second is a four-factor analysis that deals with limited English proficiency. You do not need to press over that, and that requires your signature, Mission Matias as chief officer or manager. And the third is environmental exemption. Basically stating that it is an accepted grant, you do not have to go through the federal process as we would say, go to the road or like capital proof projects, you would have to. That is not the case here, and that also requires your signature, Mission Matias.
Thank you.
Yes, this is one step a minute that we have to go through to get to reimbursements and claims taken care of, and our money be first time.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone?
No.
I don't think we have any questions. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution authorizing the application for this grant program and the authorized signatures.
I saw more, Madam President.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been passed. Thank you.
Madam President, we should note too that per the commission's direction and instruction, the application is already online.
Right.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is receiving applications as we speak, and so hopefully the process of awarding these grants, these Lifeline grants, which the commission feels very strongly about, is close to realization at this point.
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the commission, I use that term guerrilla marketing. Right now, the grant period is open, and we are extending with all of our strategic partners that getting that word out. We have, just very briefly, we have seven completed applications in receipt. We're working actively with about twelve others right now. Bailey's back at the office. So just wanted to give you a quick, quick update. June 12th, 4:00 PM is that first round cutoff, so.
So just for those who are listening, if I could just summarize, the Lifeline grant was, is money that we have brought back into Lepore County to provide relief for businesses, small businesses who have been struck by the economic disaster of COVID-19. They are not businesses in the city of Michigan City or in the city of Lepore. They have to be in the county or Westville or one of our small neighboring towns, and they can find the information on our website and the application, and if they have any questions, your number's on there as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have an update on the county commission, the commission's county building reopening plan for June 15th. We are going to talk about this a little bit, but we are, we decided that we're going to follow up and get into the weeds in more detail with a Zoom call between our judiciary, the judges, and some of our key department heads. So at this time, we're going to do some summaries, and I see Tony's here from the Health Department. Tony, could you come up and just chat a little bit? I know the public is really interested in COVID-19 updates, so if you could start with that and then anything else that you'd like to share with us about the reopening?
Okay, what we decided was based Larry and Darlene, we had a meeting earlier this week, and basically, right now I just finalized the contract for the screeners and the temperature, whatever you want to call them, but you'll have to approve at the next commissioner's meeting. So that's all done. I've already got a couple of applications in, believe it or not, for a couple of screeners, so.
So where does one apply to be a screener?
Right online.
On our webpage?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Bart set it up, so.
And how old do you have to be to be a screener, and is training provided?
We don't, well, at least eighteen.
Eighteen years old, okay.
Students is what we're getting. We're getting medical students. Or Daisy Piggy Rose set it up, where she had a couple of medical students that were interested in summer job to help out.
But it doesn't have to be medically, it could be nursing students, anybody in healthcare.
Really anybody, okay, we'll take anybody, but yeah, they need to put the word out. So, and officially, me and Bart have not put out to the media yet, so.
Okay, well, I think, I'd like us to do that. I think that this is an opportunity for us to reach out to young people who are saving for their college education, for school, or trying to get a first job experience. If they have a healthcare background, even better. But could we make sure that the announcement that is, if you can get that to Diane, she can get that out to the media on the web.
Plus, we have to get a job description too. We're working on that right now too. Because we don't, you know, just refer to the temperature tape, but they're also going to be responsible for the questionnaire and all that.
Okay, Diane, if you could reach out to Julie and to Tony and get that out to the media? Thank you. Could you give us an update on COVID in general, sort of a summary of where we are? Because I know the community is still.
Well, we still have cases, of course, you know, our nurses are not doing it right now, so every day Jenny still gets a report out. P-FAD maybe five.
On an average of three or four patients a day.
It's gone down.
Positive cases a day, yeah.
At the Michigan City High School, the testing that's going on there, we're not getting very much, we've only had ten today. I believe we had twelve the other day, so I'm really surprised the response is not there. I don't know how the questionnaire goes, that's all ran by Optum, so.
Tony, can you, do you know till when they're open?
I really couldn't tell you.
You can't tell, right?
So I think this is an opportunity for us to make sure the public knows that free testing is available at Michigan City High School.
Free testing is available, like I said, I don't know what was involved with questionnaire. So, I mean, they have a hundred tests available every day.
Right.
Okay, and we're only getting ten, so.
So people need to register in advance so that information is on our website, or they can call your office if they are concerned.
Is it on our county website in case? Okay, all right, very good.
As you know, the restaurants are opening slowly. We're still at, fifteenth will be seventy-five capacity, six feet social distancing, the tables are all pulled apart. I know I've had a lot of requests for schools with the graduations. I got contact by the blue chip. We're going to be doing a public inspection there next week, make sure everything's meeting the standards for social distancing. So, other than that.
Okay. Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, could you give us a summary about facilities and anything else that we need to know about? And then we'll be getting deeper into it on the Zoom call that we're scheduling.
We're moving forward pretty good with everything that is going to be needed for opening. A few delays on getting the materials has been our hardest part, so, but everything is moving forward. We're anticipating getting completion here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Like I said, we've got a good plan set aside, so we'll present to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make some brief comments about reopening of the buildings. So basically, in these discussions, the key concepts that we are trying to follow are the four pillars that we talked about, and then when we do the Zoom call, we'll see how practically we can implement these four pillars. First one is a symptom screening and temperature check that will be done on anyone who comes into the buildings. What we are trying to do is to encourage that the temperature screening for the staff is done in their respective departments if possible, that way to prevent any kind of difficulty getting in to the buildings because of too many people are waiting to have their temperature checked right there. So that hopefully staff will do it in their respective offices, whereas for visitors, we'll do it at the entrance to the buildings. And then symptom screening, the staff can do the symptom screening on their own, and if they have any positive symptoms, they report to their supervisors, and then the symptom screening for the visitors, we'll do it at the entrance. Then masking is important, especially if the staff is working in a room where there more than one person is in that room, then masking is important. Social distancing is important, and then lastly, hand hygiene, whether it's hand washing or using the sanitizer. I get this question asked frequently. I get this question asked frequently, can we not wear a mask or can we not do the temperature check or whatever? So what I have found from the literature and the experience over the last few months is when we do all of them together, then it is effective. And so that's the reason why I just want to let everybody know that it's best to do all four of them together for us to keep ourselves safe and keep the folks who are working with us safe and our family members safe. So that's the reason why it's important that we do all of them.
Thank you.
Madam President, I don't know if Mr. Novak is on the line or not, but I got a text from him, from the PPE committee and the commissioners need to know, the 50,000 masks came in Monday. And with what Mr. Butcher has, we have close to 90 to 100,000 masks. So we're going to be in good shape on the masking. But again, kudos to the PPE committee for their efforts to secure those masks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. I know Joey, I asked you and Randy to hang around through that big process, so thank you for that. Is there any additional insight you can give us? And we really appreciate you following up and making sure that we were able to supply particularly the court system. So Joey, Randy, anything?
Yes, I'll be happy to start.
Thanks.
As we all know, we have a PPE committee in Lepore County that consists of Randy, Rich, Rosensky, Mike Mullenauer and Mike Rosenbaum. And working with that committee, we order PPE for the entire county, all departments. And while we initially asked, I sent out several emails asking for their needs, now it's time to deliver on those needs. And so Larry Butcher has put together a system whereby he can track all the departments and the PPE that they need. We have masks, both paper and reusable masks for all employees and we have additional masks for the public that walks in without a mask. And also, we have masks for the courts. When they have jury selection, they'll be issued additional masks so that their needs are met. We also have hand sanitizer and for those departments that handle money, we do have gloves. Now, we kind of have a little bit of a shortage on the gloves, but we're working on that, trying to get more gloves in. The other thing we have a shortage of is wipes. We do have some disinfectant spray that Larry Levadowski will be working with the departments to get that spray to them and the paper towel, whatever that is needed. And if there's anything else that we're missing, please let me or Larry Butcher know what your additional needs are. We also have flex glass shields that should be in any day now. And Larry Levadowski will be working with departments to see if they need them or not. Our priority is the courts. We have nine offices that we put counter tops with shields in those departments that really needed to deal with the public every day. And we have movable flex glass shields, like I just said, that will be used probably in the courts or wherever we need them. And if we need to order additional ones, we will, but we want to try to be as thorough as possible, but yet protect all of our employees and the public. And with that said, if there are any questions I'm having to answer or yield the floor to Randy to see what he can say.
Great summary, Joey. Thank you so much. Randy, any additions?
We have, we have, we have the gloves on order.
Okay.
We have a few through an EMS supplier, supplier that EMS uses. It's just a matter of getting them in. We have pallet, I think 50 cases of wipes that are supposed to be in this week, if not the first, the next week, in addition to some wipes that are already in that EMS has. So some of the supplies are kind of being stored with EMS, some of them are being stored with Larry because Larry, the state has really opened up a lot of their supply. So I would think that the 15th date, assuming that the wipes come in this week, we should be in good shape with PPE. I don't know about the flex glass being installed. I think that's going to be a little bit more of a delay, but I think we're in good shape right now with the PPE and especially with what we have on our.
Thank you, Randy. Any other comments or questions from anyone? All right.
One more thing, I did speak to one of the people in Circuit Court about that, to reach out to them, design the liaison to the courts. This was the kind of first I heard that they were worried about that.
Yeah.
We have it all planned out, I think there was just a little bit of a lack of communication.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we're going to be meeting, I believe we're going to try to meet tomorrow morning. Hopefully, you, Joey and Randy, we were just discussing it amongst ourselves while the bids were being opened, a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 to, with department heads and some of you, just to make sure that there is clear communication, everyone knows what we have in either on order or in hand already, what the expectations are for our staff and employees and what the expectations will be managing public ingress and egress in and out of our buildings. So Diane will be sending that out this afternoon. Did I miss anything? Are we good? Okay. Moving on now, this has been a long meeting, so Commissioner comments, anyone have anything left to say?
Madam President, before I walked into the room, I had a brief conversation with our county clerk, Ms. Kathy Crowback. She and her team are counting the ballots, the paper ballots that came in. She, just for everybody in the public to understand that usually during a presidential year, we get about 500 paper ballots, but this time, it has been anywhere from, I think, between 4,500 to 5,000, about 10 times more paper ballots we have received. And so, Ms. Crowback and her team are busy counting those ballots, hopefully late today or by tomorrow morning. She said that she may have the final tally. I just wanted everybody to know that.
And if I could add to Commissioner Corus' comments, the Secretary of State specifically indicated a few days ago that counties should be prepared, that it would take a day to tally some of the additional results. So Lepore County is certainly not alone. The election board issued a statement yesterday clarifying that there are a number of counties around the state in the same situation in terms of having to tally the absentees today. Hopefully, we'll have results even later today with the way the processing is going. But that, it is certainly not unique to Lepore County with the flood of absentee ballots around the state.
Madam President, I also saw the election board members were actively involved here in this work and so I'm grateful to all of them for working hard to get this done smoothly. Thank you.
Well, I think actually, it's quite exciting that so many people have responded to the paper ballot process. So voting in our country is absolutely one of the values we hold dearest. And so, from my perspective, I think it's wonderful that people have accessed the paper voting process and it certainly also shows that people are willing to change, they are willing to adjust their methods. And so as a state, perhaps our Secretary of State will see this as something the state needs to invest in the infrastructure around the mail-in ballot approach because I think people are open to that concept. And if it can increase people's ability to vote easily and to vote efficiently, then I think that's something that we should all encourage. Rich, anything?
Yeah, I have seen this weekend, John Bon Jovi, don't be a rocker, wrote a new song. He said, "If you can't do what you do, do what you can." And I thought about that. You know, our world as commissioners has changed ways that nobody could have predicted what we were getting into here. You know, we still have paving projects, we've got storm damage cleanup, we've patched in potholes, we got the Michigan City Courthouse project, we've got the bypass, we got flooding issues, still wrestling with the KIP project and then, of course, the election, giant thing laid on top of us. And even though we as commissioners can't be together, we're still getting the job done. My fellow commissioners here have been very good at working remote and together, we've kind of gelled on a little unit here, I think. And I'm very impressed with the results and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for their professionalism, the perseverance and their patience through this.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rich. You know, I read, it's funny that you'd bring that up because I read a comment on social media and, you know, you all know that I'm Irish, so I did get my Irish temper engaged and I had to back away. I decided not to say anything, but a person on social media was saying that the commissioners show up at two meetings a month and they don't really earn their keep. And I, I was so incensed because yes, for the public to see that we show up for two public meetings a week, I mean, a month, that may be, but we are actually the executive branch, the operational branch of the county. And so unless a department is run by an elected official who operates their department on their own or in coordination with us, all of the other departments rely on our leadership. We're constantly, seven days a week, often 24 hours a day. And especially, you know, when you talked about some of the issues, you talked about some of those issues weren't even on our radar as far as COVID and some of the emergency response and ordering PPE and all of that. So certainly, this is a hardworking group. I have to say, the county team has been incredible throughout all the last, in particular, the last six months. I think my colleagues would agree that the camaraderie and the collaboration and the leadership from our department heads and all of the staff pitching in to make this manageable has been an amazing experience for all of us. So thank you so much, everyone out there.
Madam President, before you conclude, I just wanted to add one more thing.
Yes.
I think for those who are watching, in addition to Commissioner Matias' comments, I think we communicate even on weekends.
Yes.
On.
Seven o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night.
And telephone and by the way, thank you Diane and Darlene for being involved in those discussions and they are also working whenever there is a need. So I appreciate everybody pitching in and doing whatever they can.
Everybody doesn't see the six Zoom meetings we had in one week.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, I appreciate you calling out Darlene and Diane because even around the election, which they have just.
All they're doing is working seven days a week, 15 hours a day.
I know. Yeah, they do an incredible job. So thank you, everyone, for the great teamwork. With that, I will conclude this meeting, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.